This time, six eleven P.M., we will open the agenda for the Prattville City Council meeting. If you will join me by standing and rendering a pledge of allegiance to our flag, followed by the invocation. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you bow with me, please? Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, we come to you humbly this evening to thank you for the many blessings that we have all received, to thank you especially for the veterans that are returning home from the war zone where they have been in harm's way, and their families as well. Dear Lord, we hope and pray that you will be with each of us as we make decisions that affect the citizens of our community. We pray that our decisions will be as you would have them to be, in Jesus' name. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilman Striplin.
Here.
Councilman Wood.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Councilman Renninger.
Here.
Councilman Bowles.
Here.
Councilman Fink.
Here.
Roll has been called, all are present, we'll call the meeting officially to order. The character trait for the month of February is deference, limiting my freedom so that I do not offend the taste of those around me. Gentlemen, you have received copies of the minutes from the city council meeting of January the seventeenth, two thousand and twelve. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move from Councilman Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Are there any additions, deletions, or comments about the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand, please. Any opposition by a like sign, seeing none, these minutes are approved. In just a moment, I will be granting a point of personal privilege to our mayor for a special presentation. At the conclusion of this presentation, the council will be going into executive session to discuss the good name and character of individuals. We will return after the executive session, back into our regular session, and conduct the rest of the business at that time. Mayor, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me this point of privilege. At this time, just to let everybody know, we have some very special guests with us tonight. It's my honor and privilege to recognize these Air Force and Army service members for their service, and I have some proclamation I want to read, and if at this point in time Thank you this evening, and before I start this, I just really want to say thank you, thank you for the services that you have been able to offer us. You know, if it wasn't for the dedication that you guys have, we would not have the freedom that we do today, and it's just, I truly hope that this means as much to you as it does me. It's truly my honor to stand here and just know that we have some true heroes here in Prattville, Alabama, and it just makes me proud. I just can go ahead with this commendation, is whereas our nation has fought and continues to fight battles around the world, let us solemnly remember the sacrifices of all those who have fought on the seas, in the air, and on the foreign shores to preserve our heritage and freedom. Let us consecrate ourselves to the task of promoting and enduring peace so that their efforts shall not have been in vain, whereas we have benefited from the contributions of these, of those willing to depart the comforts of home to answer the call of duty. And our citizens celebrate the service and sacrifice of these servicemen and women as we pay special tribute to these citizens, whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price through our history, whereas we owe a great depth of gratitude to those who have served in defense of this nation, whereas the people and mayor of Prattville wish that the sacrifice of so many in Iraq never been forgotten. At this time, Major Starnes.
It's my pleasure, now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend Major Starnes for his sacrifice and service during his deployment to Iraq with the Alabama National Guard, two hundred and thirty-first MP Battalion, training Iraq forces. He is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero. Thank you for what you have done for us.
Thank you. Thank you again.
One thing that I really did forget is that, and I hope is common knowledge, that the one and only council person that we have in here who is a combat veteran is Council President Mike Renninger. Thank you for your services also.
Major Butler will come down.
Thank you, sir. Now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend Major Butler for his sacrifice of multiple tours in the Middle East to include a deployment to Iraq supporting the Iraq Training and Advisory Mission focusing on training, advice, and leadership. Shaun is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero. Thank you, sir.
Now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend Major Pavita for his sacrifice of multiple tours in the Middle East to include a deployment to Iraq supporting the Iraq Training and Advisory Mission as an air advisor to the Iraq Air Force. Carlos is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero. Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, Captain Hughes was unable to be with us tonight. However, we're honored to be present, to present this commendation to his wife, Sarah. She will step forward at this time. Now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend Captain Hughes for his sacrifice and service during his deployment to Iraq with airfield operations, supporting air traffic controller training. Without his vital role and his necessary training, our aircraft would not have returned safely to base. Robert is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero.
Thank you. Thank you for this.
Thank you so much.
Now, we'll see if I can get this name right, and I hope I do. Technical Sergeant Al Wusi?
Whoa.
Close enough.
[laughing].
Now therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend Technical Sergeant Al Wusi for her sacrifice of tours in the Middle East to include a deployment to Iraq with the civilian engineering squadron, supporting force protection. Nicole is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero. Thank you.
Last but easiest.
[laughing].
Harris, that's the reason why it's so easy for me. Thank you. Therefore, I, Bill Gillespie Jr., mayor of the city of Prattville, Alabama, do hereby commend First Class Harris for his sacrifice of multiple tours in the Middle East to include deployment in Iraq with the first, one thirty-first Aviation Battalion with the Army National Guard, supporting aircraft maintenance inspections. Chad is a living testimony to remind us what is important and what it means to be a hero.
this is a special occasion, we'll let him come up here. On behalf of the entire city council, and it's not often that I speak for everyone
Thank you.
Thank you this time. We owe a standing ovation for everyone. up here, but I think I can in this particular case, let me just say thank you and welcome home. Hoorah.
Well, Council President, I want to say thank you. Thank you for allowing me to honor these people. They have honored us for their services, and there again, thank you for the services you have provided for us also, then and now. And that's all I have for, at this point in time.
This time, the Chair will entertain a motion to go back into regular session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Council President Pro Tim Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Any discussion about going back into regular session? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, and the opposition by a like sign, we're back into regular session. This time, we will entertain comments from persons present pertaining to any item on our agenda tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on any agenda item tonight?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bonnie Brand, two fifty-eight, Terry Lane, here in Prattville. Before you guys get to voting, some of these agenda items, I would like to ask if I could get a brief explanation of what the item is about. For example, number one says to enter into a contract for consulting services. What would they be consulting about? Councilman Striplin, you sponsored that, so what would they be consulting about?
Councilman Striplin.
Yes, sir. It is an opportunity to provide consulting services for the wastewater department, provide some management training, provide development of a management team, implementation of a multi-year master plan, provide training in writing managerial reports, and assistance in interpreting and implementing financial reports.
Okay, thank you. I have number three, the three seasonal leisure services. What would their general duties be? Councilman Frank?
Yes, they're actually taking care of the after-school daycare program that is in the middle of, it's actually in the middle of the program itself, to see it through to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. I have number five, to authorize the mayor to ratify and affirm contracts for services for community initiatives and city county services specified. Do we have a general sentence as to what those initiatives and services will be, sponsored by President Renninger?
Yes, sir. In order for us to provide services, let's say just for instance, through a nonprofit, we must have a contract with them, a contract for services. Some are ongoing or signed by the mayor, some are new, but we have to authorize the mayor in order to sign a contract for services so the city can participate with these nonprofits or service organizations.
So it's just nonprofit service organizations that he'll be entering into a contract with?
It could be nonprofits, it could be, well, let's say the library. We have to have a contract for service with them.
Okay.
That's just an example.
In item number six, the hiring of two police officers, has there been an increase in the requirements, or are we just missing two police officers? Councilman Wood sponsored that.
Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're actually missing more than two, sir, but for the public safety, health, and welfare, we're going to do our best to hire two, and hopefully at some point, hire as needed. But we're actually down more than two.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions to Mr. Brand? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the council on any agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll go into reports. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. But I would like to lead off tonight to say that state of Alabama lost a true southern gentleman earlier when Senator Mitchell passed away, and he will be truly missed in this area because he definitely left a fingernail print on the Toga County. He was very, very good and very gracious to us. But, so move further on in the report, just want to talk about resolution number one tonight, couple little comments on it, and just a little bit of information that may or may not be common knowledge, but one of them is that the wastewater department has over two hundred and fifty years of experience in the people who work there now. I truly believe that we need to show them some respect and support for at least granting them at least ninety days for them to show some improvements, and then let us to reevaluate the direction that that department has been moving in. I think they have come a very long ways in a very short period of time, if you consider how they've pretty much been put on the very back burner over the last several years. But on resolution number one, I'm going to ask that you guys either hold that for ninety days, hold it, table it, whatever you want to call it, or vote it down tonight. Recently, Rick Teague was able to have Dale Gonday to come up and be one of his plant supervisors, and working alongside HR, they've been able to reposition personnel, or then the process of repositioning personnel, and with that move, it's going to show a big savings in overtime, is a cut down on overtime in that area, and I think also to show a big, a huge savings in maintenance costs, plus also, this department will be a lot more efficient just by making some of the moves, in my opinion, that they have come up with. They have been giving pretty daily reports. Matter of fact, I think they've pretty much worn out the wastewater committee on the daily reports, and I think now they're going to start giving them monthly or quarterly at whatever you guys requested, but they have actually impressed me with how they have stepped up to the plate and just been able to show to me, prove to me exactly how much more involved it is into running the day-to-day operations of a wastewater plant, because it's just a lot of examples. One example is to be that probably the most common misconception is, is that all the work that they do is around the two plants that we have, and that is a very misconception there, because they're out working all the sewer lines that we have, and neighborhoods, and might as well say the forest. I mean, they've been, I've seen them out in the creeks, in the valleys, so it's, I do tip my hat to them, and they do provide a very big service to us, and with that, I truly believe we do need to show them the respect and the support, and allow them to at least prove to us what they can do for the next ninety days, and then reevaluate it after that, and see if we need to go for another ninety after that, if we need to give them six months after that, or if we just need to say, no, you guys need some help. But that's going to be my recommendation, either to table resolution number one tonight or vote it down. On resolution number five, can I ask you to go ahead and move forward with that? We have the funds available, just needing your approval on that. Resolution number five is to reauthorize the mayor to sign contracts for our community service people. I guess one good example is going to be the library, and also the humane shelter, but there's a lot of other ones, family support center, the Boys and Girls Club, PASC, pretty much every one that we have listed in the budget, but if you can move forward with that, and I've challenged our finance director to, at the beginning of our, after six months in, for us to start paying our big recipients of this community initiative, start paying them monthly. That's my goal, for us to start doing that. If we can't do it by that point in time in our budget, beginning of next budget cycle, I'm challenging him to go ahead and pay off our small community initiatives, our larger ones though, start paying them on a monthly siphon, so that way it's easier, in my opinion, for us to budget, and hopefully for them also on that one. Gentlemen, I also need to ask that a leisure services committee meeting be called, we need to talk about potentially some different, two different parcels of land that we have here in Prattville. One is a little more than sixty acres, and the other is a little more than a hundred acres, and talking with Drew Peterson, our leisure services director, and he's out sick tonight, but he has been talking with the state, and they have been approaching the city about a archery shooting range, and I also have been kicking around the idea of potentially some hiking trails, and some equestrian trails in this one area, and another parcel, the sixty-plus acres of land that the city owns, I would like for us to look forward in the future and possibly have some hiking and biking trails, mountain biking trails. Just, I guess my real big theme here is to try to find some activities, so, and I guess everybody's heard the terminology, staycation, try to get everybody to stay here at home, where it's a little bit safer in my opinion than it is out in a lot of other areas, and also try to get into some physical activity, bring the family back closer together, and I think we have a very good two areas here that if we move forward on, we can get some funding from the state, there's also potentially some grants out there that we can move with, but also from what I have seen, there's a lot of community excitement about this. So I think right now, the irons are hot, and if we can move forward with that in the very near future, I think we can be offering some parklands that have not been tapped into over the last several years, but I do need us to be putting that on our front burner, so to speak. I also want to ask you guys to please note the progress out back with our Creek Walk and Gazebo, some of the pictures that you have, I asked Dr. Tom Miller and Ray Bowles to bring their iPad, and some of the pictures you see there, some of the ones that I've taken, and obviously it was an automatic camera, because I'm not that very good of a photographer, but I think those are some pretty good, pretty good pictures there, but if you look at those, at some of the improvements we've recently made on our Creek Walk and Gazebo out back, and I'm also hearing quite a bit of buzz about that. I want to give you a little bit of positive news about some of our different departments, I'm going to lump it all into one, which is, in the past, we have seen some overtime that it probably had not been managed quite as well as it possibly should have, but I've reviewed the overtime reports for our first quarter, and these figures are showing me that our department heads are managing their departments very well. The budget of overtime is, to date, four percent less than targeted, and I want to thank all the department heads for working forward on that, because that's just one step forward with my goal, toward my goal of reducing this budget by one million dollars. Just want to talk a little bit about the month of February. We have quite a bit going on in the month of February. On the thirteenth of February, we have a job fair. It's over at the Chamber of Commerce, it's going to be over there all day, so if you know anybody who's interested in a job, ask them to step over there for that day, but it's pretty much from can to can't, as long as they have somebody coming in, they're going to be there, but that's going to be on lucky the thirteenth. On the seventeenth, it's going to be our thirteenth annual program for our Black History Month, so over here at our Doster Center, invite everybody to be there. I was there at last year's program, and it was educational, energizing, entertaining, absolutely enjoyed it, from six to seven thirty. Then also on the eighteenth, we have our Mardi Gras event, it's at three, three P.M., right out on our normal parade route. This year, the grand marshal was C.J. Martin. Kelly Cook and myself chose her as a grand marshal because of her efforts to keep the good times rolling here in Prattville with this event, that quite a few people have really come to look forward to it. I know when, it was almost going to be a no-show for the Mardi Gras parade, numerous people, at the urging of C.J. Martin, were able to come together and look like they're going to be taking care of the police overtime on that, so I just want to thank everybody who has participated in that and been able to keep us moving forward on that. Hope to see everyone, every one of you guys there. I will be there. Right now, I don't know if I'm going to be riding in a convertible or walking, but hope you'll be there too. On the twentieth, we have some of our out-of-town guests. There's some people coming in from Romania. I'll be showing them around our little slice of southern heaven here, and if you're around that day, I'll be glad to introduce you to them, but you know, the twentieth is also President's Day, and so a lot of people go out of town on that day. I'll be here working hard as ever, but like I say, call me if you want to meet some of our out-of-town guests. Footnote on that is that since that is President's Day, garbage will not be picked up that day, it will be collected on Tuesday. Last but not least, I have a plan to conduct a State of the City address to our citizens here in Prattville. It's Thursday, February the twenty-third, six P.M., here in the council chambers. Hope that everyone, each and every one of you guys can be here and see exactly what we have to present to the citizens of Prattville. Mr. President, that ends my report.
Any questions for our mayor, for any of the council members? Yes, Mr. President.
I just want to make sure I heard you correct. President's Day, that garbage pick-up, I don't know if that's correct or not, but I think they pick up on that day.
Okay, my bad on that one then. Though they will have garbage on that day then. Okay, thank you for correcting me on that one.
Any other questions from our mayor, Councilman Bowles?
I know you had an awful lot to cover tonight. First things, are very excited about the State of the City address on the twenty-third, and I really encourage every citizen to be here, so that he can go over the state of the affairs of the financial situation. Second, you skimmed over the walking and bike trails. I know you had a lot on your plate, but I would say, anybody interested in that, please contact me, because we want to have these up and running by this summer, hopefully, and the plan is to try to do it with help, just to model like the Creek Walk, so we don't have to take monies from the city to do this, but I thank you for all your help on that project.
Well, I look forward to it. I know I've had a lot of interest on it, I've talked with some personnel from Maxwell, and they're interested in being volunteers in it. We've had Eagle Scouts who are looking over some of the property, we've bicyclists, I was talking with one who happens to be a city employee, told me that he would, really wants to sit on the committee, and I told him, I said, well, you know, you must be one of the guys that have one of those five thousand dollar bicycles, and he said, well, yeah, I just got through selling that one for that, and I said, well, mine's about a fifty-five dollar bicycle, but I'm going to try to get out there with them also, but I do believe there's going to be a lot of interest in it, and I think it'd be very good, it seems to be a very big circuit for that, and not only, like I say, it can coincide with the staycation, but then also I believe it will bring some people in from out of town, and it'd be a very big asset to the community at a very minimum cost.
Any other questions of the mayor? Councilman Miller?
I've got two or three things, Mayor, and I likewise am excited to see you scheduling the State of the City address, and I'll definitely be here, because that will be a good, I think, I know you had a lot on your plate, but I would say, anybody interested in that, please contact me, because we want to have these up and running by this summer, hopefully. And the plan is to try to do it with help, just to model like the Creek Walk, so we don't have to take monies from the city to do this. But I thank you for all your help on that project.
Well, I look forward to it. I know I've had a lot of interest on it. I've talked with some personnel from Maxwell, and they're interested in being volunteers in it. We've had Eagle Scouts who are looking over some of the property. We've bicyclists. I was talking with one who happens to be a city employee, told me that he would, really wants to sit on the committee. And I told him, I said, "Well, you know, you must be one of the guys that have one of those five thousand dollar bicycles." And he said, "Well, yeah, I just got through selling that one for that." And I said, "Well, mine's about a fifty-five dollar bicycle, but I'm going to try to get out there with them also." But I do believe there's going to be a lot of interest in it, and I think it'd be very good. It seems to be a very big circuit for that. And not only, like I say, it can coincide with the staycation, but then also, I believe it will bring some people in from out of town, and it'd be a very big asset to the community at a very minimum cost.
Any other questions of the mayor? Councilman Miller?
I've got two or three things, Mayor. And I likewise, I'm excited to see you scheduling the State of the City address, and I'll definitely be here, because that will be a good, I think, a good presentation. The question, the first question I've got for you is, could you give us an update on the Continental Eagle issue? I know that you have shared some emails and had some meetings. Is there anything you can share that relates to that topic?
Nothing ironclad right now, just except for Thursday of last week. I did meet with a relator and some investors, and they, I don't know if they, if they were looking as much at the mill itself as they were looking at our community, to see what we had to offer. They had seen projects similar to this. I'd say that they have been here and done that before. I think they have the financial backing that will be very beneficial to the city of Prattville. But all that is still preliminary. But like I mentioned earlier, is that I don't know exactly how much were they looking at the structure, as they were looking at the community itself. And they're very excited what they saw downtown, uptown, midtown, out back, with the gazebo coming in, and the Creek Walk, and just everything that we had to present to them. But they were very interested, and I felt very, very good coming out of that meeting.
And that's good. And I know, you know, in the financial times we're in, it's challenging to, you know, think through a lot of different issues, but I think we all agree that, you know, that property being in jeopardy certainly has gotten our attention, because it does cause us to reflect on what's important about Prattville and the historic value and contribution it makes to the character of this city and continues to do so. So I commend you for doing everything you can to help make sure that it's not jeopardized. My second question for you is on Resolution Number Five. It refers essentially, we're going to give you permission to move forward with signing the contracts. Are those contracts all done? Are they ready to sign?
Not all of them, no, sir. But we will be cutting some checks tomorrow. And it won't, it won't take us long after that for the city attorney and the finance director to wrap up the rest of them.
So I guess I'll be specific, because these times, you know, different entities that are recipients of those funds are facing scarce dollars on a lot of fronts. You know, the sources of their funds, but in particular, the Humane Shelter and the library, that is a great deal of their total budget, the allocation that the city makes. So will the library and the Humane Shelter, those two in particular, be getting a check tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes, sir.
Installment, okay. Thank you.
And those are some of the ones that I'm hoping that, in the very near future, we'll be paying them on a monthly basis instead of quarterly.
Good. And I applaud you for moving in that direction as well. So that, I think, summarize, that's it. Thank you very much.
Any further questions of the mayor, from the council? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving to reports from the council members on special committees. Councilman Striplin?
No report.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you hurried tonight, we have Resolution Number Six on here. The Public Safety Committee did meet on this, and consensus is to move forward, and I urge you everyone to move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Miller?
Two things related to the fire committee, and I've got two of the staff here. Chief has got a conflict with attending tonight, but I want to ask Mr. Dallas if you can come up and give the council a real brief overview of what's going on with the ISO visit that we're about to have.
Yes, sir. The end of this month, ISO, the insurance service organization, is coming in to evaluate the fire department. This is typically done around ten-year point. They were here last in September of '01, and they'll be evaluating pretty much everything that the fire department has a hand in, or someone has a hand in what we do. Everything from communications to water supply, hydrant distribution apparatus, personnel response time, you name it, they look at it. And when they get done crunching all the numbers, they assign an ISO rating based on their findings. So as soon as we have that information, we will provide that to you and let you know the status on where we stand at that point.
Thank you, and I appreciate that overview. And they actually will start when, and it will be how long a process? Do you know offhand?
On our end of it, it's about a three-day time period. I believe they're coming in on the twenty-eighth. And we've already met with them once. They've provided us the packets that we needed to go ahead and start working and filling out, and that's what we've been doing the last few days, is pulling the records that they're requesting. So they're only here for about three days, but we're working diligently for the duration of this month to have that information to hand to them, so.
So on that timeline, I guess my last question on that subject is, when they've finished that part of it ultimately, when do they say that they actually will give us the results, give us the feedback of what the ratings?
The crew that comes in, that does the work, they are not able to give us their findings immediately. What they do is they send it all to their home office, and the numbers are crunched there. I think one of the reasons they do that is to protect them as well as us, because if they get a preliminary number, a rating, and then it's not backed up by the home office, then everybody has egg on their face. So to answer your question honestly, I don't have an exact date and time. What I will do is speak with Mr. Waters, Bill Waters, from ISO, when he comes later this week, and I'll try to get you an answer on what the turnaround time is.
Well, and, you know, I'm used to folks in similar sorts of things will get a response within sixty days or ninety days. It may come earlier, but that's their outside. So if you could pin that, if you could pin that down for us and give us that information, I'd appreciate it.
Commander Whaley says he thinks he remembers the last time it took about three months, but I will find out. It's for sure, a little tighter time frame for you on that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask Mr. Whaley to step forward, too. He actually went to the county commission meeting tonight and observed their dispensation on the ambulance contract, which is on the agenda for tonight. And if you could update us, update the council on that, and then also hit the highlights, the two or three highlights that are elements in this contract.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to represent the fire department in the ambulance contract. I did attend the county commission meeting tonight, where the contract that is, I think, Exhibit A on Resolution Number Four before you tonight, this is the same, well, it's basically the same contract that you approved the mayor, or authorized the mayor to enter into several meetings ago. The county came back, they didn't accept that contract. They wanted to take the amount of the ambulance that we purchased, which is part of the contract, instead of paying for that in the first year of the contract. They wanted to have three equal annual payments for the ambulance itself. So got with Mr. McDowell, we went back, and we wrote into the contract the cost of the ambulance, plus finance charges, plus interest. And then, once we're able to, once the contract's signed and we release our bid specs for bid, and then accept and award a bid and order the ambulance, the city will then, upon taking ownership of the ambulance, the city will pay for in full the ambulance itself. But the amount, if there's any finance charges or interest involved in that, the total amount will be separated or divided into three equal annual payments to be made by the county to the city. The contract price, the annual contract price is three hundred and eighty a year for three years of the contract, plus the price of the ambulance. And that was approved unanimously by county commission tonight. So if this Resolution Number Four is adopted tonight, then the mayor and the commission, the commission chairman will be able to enter into this contract.
And I would remind the council, another key element, and I think a really good part of this contract is that the billables all will come to the city.
Yes, sir.
And that's different from the formula that's been the basis of the relationship up till this new contract.
Yes, and under the previous contract, all revenues were subtracted from, we had our total operating cost minus all revenues, which gave us our net operating cost, and they paid a percentage of the net operating cost. This takes the factor of call volume and things out of it, it's a set contract price annually for three years, plus the cost of a brand-new ambulance.
Okay. And I want to lastly commend you and Chief and your other colleagues in the fire department for moving this forward, because I think it's a much better product and a much better contract, you know, in terms of what we've got with our relationship with the county than what we've had up to this point. So I know a lot of work, a lot of hard work went into it, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Fink?
Yes, sir. Just one reminder, this came up earlier during the comments, but Resolution Three for the hiring of the seasonal workers, summer, seasonal leisure services employees, the finance, excuse me, Leisure Services Committee did meet on this, and we agree that our recommendation is to pass this tonight.
The Finance Committee meeting for the city of Prattville, Finance Committee of the city of Prattville, met last week, and we discussed Items Three, Five, and Six. And we unanimously concur with the committee recommendations and recommend that the council move forward with these three items. We will get into our agenda now. Item One was held from our January seventeenth, 2012, meeting. It's a resolution to authorize and direct the mayor to enter into a contract for consulting services with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood, cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Contract expires on September the thirtieth, 2012. Is there any further discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I have a substitute resolution to introduce.
Councilman Striplin, you have the floor.
Whereas, on December the twentieth, 2011, City Council of the city of Prattville adopted an operating budget for the fiscal year 2011 and 12 to pay the daily cost of the city. And whereas, the adopted budget established and directed the budgets of the wastewater and sanitation departments be operated as enterprise funds. And whereas, the figures used were estimated based on prior year needs and expected changes. And whereas, the wastewater committee has determined that the wastewater department has a need for a contract with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood for consulting services as listed in Exhibit A. And whereas, the cost of such consulting services for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed ten thousand dollars. Whereas, there is no recent history of utilizing enterprise funds or employing personnel with background or experience in developing or implementing an enterprise fund at the city of Prattville. And whereas, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood will train the city of Prattville wastewater department employees to utilize, develop, and implement an enterprise fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that the fiscal year 2011 and 12 budget is hereby amended. And the fiscal year 2012 budget line item wastewater miscellaneous contract services is increased by ten thousand dollars to a total of twenty-eight thousand dollars. It said funds are hereby approved and appropriated. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville hereby approves the contract with Goodwood Mills and Kaywood for ten thousand dollars to provide consulting services for the city of Prattville wastewater department, beginning January seventeenth, 2012, and shall continue thereafter until September thirtieth, 2012, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the provisions outlined in the contract. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of the city of Prattville to execute said contract for services for and on behalf of the city of Prattville. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin has moved this substitute resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. By point of order, this will need to hold, since it came from the floor as a substitute, unless there's a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion.
Moved by Councilman Bowles. Is there a second? There a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion pertaining to the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended. The substitute resolution is properly before us. Is there any discussion about this proposed substitute resolution?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Striplin?
As a one-year member of the wastewater committee, I've seen firsthand the operations of this department. We have very dedicated personnel in that department, and as in most city departments, they are working with less staff today than they did a year ago. Now, operating as an enterprise fund, department management will be expected to be more accountable to the mayor and council, on whatever basis is deemed appropriate, to the wastewater committee on a quarterly basis, and to the citizens of Prattville, at least annually, if not more frequently. While I believe the efforts in recent weeks show the hearts of this department's personnel are in the right place, the results show we don't have staff that is currently trained to meet these challenges. For that reason, I introduce the legislation for the long-term benefit of the city and the personnel of this department. At a minimum, this legislation is designed to provide management training for those designated as wastewater management, assist in the development of a management team for this department, develop and implement a multi-year master plan, provide training in writing managerial reports, and assistance in interpreting and implementing financial For these and other good, sound, physical reasons, I urge you to support an investment in our wastewater personnel. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this, Councilman Bowles?
Yes, sir. I wanted to point out to everybody who's not aware, or not on the wastewater committee, and I'm not on there, but I have taken a lot of time to research this, that Mr. Tees, when he took over the department, it was the first time that he, the department had to run not only the department, but also a plant manager. Within two months, the other plant manager retires. Now, for the first time in Prattville's history, we have a man that is willing to run the department and be two plant managers. He's wearing three jobs. He has done this for eight months without complaining. We finally get enough money to hire us a new plant manager, and the thanks he gets is this. And so I'm going to say that, I would ask everybody, let's at least give a man that has been this dedicated and done three jobs, and never once have I heard him complain, a chance to show us what he's capable of doing with adequate help. And he still don't have adequate help, because we're still short one plant manager. So I'd ask that we'd follow the mayor's recommendation and hold this for at least three months, or just vote it down. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Mayor?
And with all due respect, I mean, just looking this substitute resolution over, I see a couple of issues already at hand. Going down to line forty-five, it talks about, you know, the increase, the increases go to ten thousand for the particular line item, but it doesn't say where the ten thousand is coming from. So are we talking about increasing the overall budget of the wastewater department? If we are, where are we anticipating a new revenue source of ten thousand dollars? Or did I just miss this? The other thing, while that's being looked over, Goodwood Mills and Kaywood is, I like to call them GMC, where I have respect for that engineering firm, but they're not the accounting firm that, who has done the study on this. The accounting firm is Jackson Thornton, who has a lot of knowledge and history in departments like this. So I mean, this, where I do have a lot of respect for Councilor Striplin, I just do not think that this is the resolution that we need. I think also, the improvements that we have shown since we have finally gotten a budget passed- the improvements that we have shown since we have finally gotten a budget passed, finally given them directions on which way to go, I just, and not to mention, I'm trying to reduce this overall budget. And even though we're in an enterprise fund here, I'm looking at all of the departments, not just, not just the police department, fire department. I'm looking at wastewater, I'm looking at each and every department, and my goal is to reduce the budget we're operating up underneath right now by $1 million, not to increase it by $10,000, and not to show, I mean, I don't see how we're, where's the revenue source? And I guess that's all really I have to say, except for I do support Rick Teague and the people out there. They're doing an excellent job. They have been neglected over the years, and in a very few short months, I feel like they will have the equipment. They already have the expertise, maybe not to operate the enterprise fund, but the enterprise fund is not his job. The enterprise fund is an accounting leverage. We're going to be talking over here with our finance people, and it was already brought up at our, one of our meetings, how I've already talked with Diane Steinheilber, Steinheilber from Jackson Thornton, to get with our finance director and give us some directions on there. And if we can't come up with the directions that we need from casual conversations, informal meetings, then at that point in time, when she has a figure for us on what it will take for our finance department to be able to cross over to the enterprise fund completely, then I'll come back to you guys with a figure and say, this is what we need to move forward with the enterprise fund. But I am just completely baffled that we're going to use a engineering firm to look over a, an accounting issue. And that's all I have to say on the issue.
Any further comments about this proposed substitute? Just a minute. The chair is going to pass the gavel to the President Pro Tem and ask to be recognized.
Let it be noted that in 7:17, the gavel was passed. Yes, Council President Reniger.
Mr. Chair, I have studied over this proposed resolution and the substitute. I understand the mayor's desire and need to give the department and the department head 90 days. Therefore, I'm going to propose that we hold this substitute resolution until our second regularly scheduled meeting in April 2012, and at that time, have it on the agenda for further consideration. My motion is to hold until the second regularly scheduled meeting in April 2012.
Second.
Council President Reniger made the motion. Councilman Wood seconded the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion to hold? I see none. It's been requested to have a roll call vote, and we will do that at this time.
Councilman Stripling?
Yea.
Councilman Wood?
Aye.
Councilman Miller?
Nay.
Councilman Reniger?
Aye.
Councilman Bowles?
Aye.
Councilman Fank?
Aye. It carries by a vote of five to one, I do believe, so it is held for till the, was it the first meeting in April?
Second.
Second meeting in April. Please note that the gavel is now being passed.
Next item on our agenda is a resolution to appoint James E. Miles to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas a vacancy currently exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustments due to the term expiration of Kitty Houser on June 15, 2011, and whereas it is the desire of a proper city council to fill that vacancy to ensure the continuity of the board's operation, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that James E. Miles is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy effective immediately, and said term will expire on June 15, 2014, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stripling. Any discussion pertaining to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Item Number Three is a resolution to authorize the hiring of three seasonal leisure services employees at a cost not to exceed $6,200. Councilman, Council President Pro Tem Fank, will you introduce this resolution?
Whereas the City of Prattville Leisure Services Department has seasonal programs, after-school programs, and sports programs, which require the hiring of seasonal employees; and whereas the fees collected by the Leisure Services Department from these programs will offset the cost of hiring seasonal employees; and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze; and whereas the cost of such workers for the remainder of the budget year will not exceed $6,200 for salaries and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $6,200 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring three seasonal employees, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY 2012 budget line items, Leisure Services Department salaries and wages, workman's comp, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring process as budgeted. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fank has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Stripling. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Item Number Four is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into an ambulance contract with Attawka County. Councilman Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, gladly. Whereas the City of Prattville has provided an ambulance service contract to Attawka County in the past, and whereas the county is requesting to amend and extend the present contract agreement as set out in the contract for services attached hereto as Exhibit A, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby approves the contract with Attawka County to provide ambulance services outside the city limits retroactive to January 1, 2012, and shall continue thereafter until December 31, 2014 unless sooner terminated in accordance with the provisions outlined in the contract. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute said contract for services for and on behalf of the City of Prattville and attested by the city clerk. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to repeal and replace Resolution Book 2011-A, page 78 upon its adoption. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Item Number Five is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign and to ratify and affirm any contracts for services for community initiatives and city-county services as specified in fiscal year 2011-2012 budget. Councilman Bowes, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas community initiatives and the city-county services are annually budgeted by the City of Prattville, and whereas the community initiatives and city-county services, the public good and necessary for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of Prattville, and whereas contracts for services are needed to support annual allocation of these funds, whereas Resolution Book 2012, page 03, authorizes the city attorney to prepare contracts for services for the 2011-2012 community initiatives and the city-county services as atomized in the FY 2000 budget, and now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville, that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any contracts for services for community initiatives and the city-county services as specified in the 2011-2012 budget, and such contracts for services are hereby ratified and affirmed. I so move.
Councilman Bowes has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Item Number Six is a resolution to authorize the hiring of two police officers for the Prattville Police Department at an annual cost not to exceed $100,529. Councilman Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas there is a need in the Prattville Police Department to fill vacancies for two full-time police officers, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such workers will not exceed an annual cost of $100,529 for salaries and benefits, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $100,529 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring two police officers, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from FY 2012 budget line items, police department salaries and wages, workman's comp, retirement, life insurance, health insurance, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring freeze as budgeted. Process, I'm sorry. Hiring processes, budgeted.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Councilman Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Councilman Bowes has seconded. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. Seeing none, this resolution is adopted. Item Number Seven is a resolution to appoint a council member for Municipal District Three. I'll call on our Council President Pro Tem Fank to introduce this resolution.
Thank you. Whereas the City of Prattville has a vacancy on the City Council in District Three due to the resignation of Councilman Dean R. Argo, and whereas written requests were asked for interested residents of District Three to fill the said vacancy, and whereas the other members of the City Council have discussed this vacancy, and after reviewing the applicants have a recommendation, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby appoints Denise Brown to fill the unexpired term of Dean R. Argo for the council position of District Three, and said appointment will become effective upon Denise Brown being duly sworn. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fank had moved, has moved for adoption of this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any discussion pertaining to this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting, oh, Councilman Miller?
I don't want to miss an opportunity to say that I think a fellow councilman would echo this. Having folks step out and put their name in the pot to be considered for this appointment, I think is, is very commendable, and the folks that came before us about 24 hours ago, you know, for the response to the questions, did a yeoman's job, and any of the individuals would have brought a lot of skills and talents to this position. So I just wanted to, and can I say that on behalf of the council? To thank everybody that did that last night on behalf of the council.
I think that's well said, Councilman. Any further comments pertaining to this resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. It is unanimous. The resolution is adopted.
Come on up.
Mrs. Brown, if you'll bring your family members forward, we will swear you into your office. Do you have any family with you? Okay, please come up and bring your family forward. I'll call on our city judge, Judge Louis Calley, to conduct the ceremonies. Step up here. Louis, step up to the mic so we can get it on record, please.
Place your right hand on the Bible. I'm sorry, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. You ready?
Ready.
Okay, it's my pleasure to do this. Repeat after me. I Denise Brown.
I Denise Brown.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution.
that I will support the Constitution.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and the Constitution.
and the Constitution.
of the state of Alabama.
of the state of Alabama.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
so long as I continue a citizen thereof.
and that I will faithfully.
and that I will faithfully.
and honestly discharge.
and honestly discharge.
the duties of the office.
the duties of the office.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
to the best of my ability.
to the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
It's not that easy. It's not that easy. Congratulations.
Councilwoman Brown, if you will take your seat at the desk.
Thank you.
I'll grant you a point of privilege if you have some comments that you'd like to make at this time, Councilwoman.
I'm just excited about this opportunity, and I thank you all for selecting me. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Well, we welcome you to the City Council. I hope you've made the right decision. Only time will tell. Councilman Fank, you have a resolution to come from the floor.
Yes, sir, I do, actually. The resolution is to mourn the loss of Senator, Senator Wendell Mitchell and to commend him for his many years of dedicated service to District Thirty and to the citizens of the state of Alabama. Whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville wishes to record its deep sorrow over the passing of former State Senator Wendell Mitchell and commend him for his many years of service to the state of Alabama, the City of Prattville, Anittawka, and Elmore Counties; and whereas Senator Walking Wendell Mitchell devoted his life to serving the citizens of District Thirty; and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville is grateful for his many contributions to the City of Prattville, including his instrumental role in the development of the Boys and Girls Club of Prattville, his support of education in citywide athletics, and his assistance with numerous restoration and economic development projects; and whereas Senator Mitchell's service is, was given with such devotion that he earned the respect, admiration, and friendship of all the citizens of District Thirty through his professional leadership and dedication. Now therefore be it resolved, in recognition of Senator Mitchell's many contributions to the City of Prattville and its citizens, we hereby express our deep appreciation for his service to this community and extend our sincere sympathy to his wife, Rosalind Mitchell, and to all members of his family. Mr. President, I so move.
Councilman Fank has moved this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wood. By point of order, this must, will require a suspension of the rules before we can move forward on this, otherwise it'll have to carry over. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules? Moved by Councilman Fank. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowes. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. It's unanimous. The rules are suspended, and this resolution is properly before us. Is there any other discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a like sign. It's unanimous. The resolution is adopted. For the record, we- For the record, we will have a formal copy of this resolution drafted with the city seal, and I will be attaching a letter from the President of the City Council on behalf of the council expressing our appreciation and sympathy to the family. This time, we will open up the floor from, for comments from those present on any item of business pertaining to the City Council. Is there anyone that wants to address the City Council on any matter of business at Seeing none. Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir. First off, I do want to commend everybody who did go through the interview process for District Three. You know, it's sitting there on the front row. You get to, get to see how people really react, you know, through that interview process, and I want to guarantee everybody in the audience that that's not an easy process. So I do commend everybody who threw their hat in the ring, who stepped up to the plate. I do congratulate Mrs. Brown for being here. I hope you're ready for the ride. It's been a ride for me for the last years as the mayor, and I know you have family support behind you, I know you have community support, so I think you'll do well, and I think you'll be an asset to the City of Prattville, and I look forward to working with you.
Councilman Striplin.
Yes, sir. Just very briefly, I too commend those that came forward to put their name in the hat and express appreciation to Dr. Miller for how eloquently he said that on all of our behalf, and welcome to Denise. Thank you.
Councilman Wood.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple items before I get to Ms. Denise. Want to remind everyone of the annual North Island Park Community Fund Day. Mark your calendars, March twenty-fourth, as always, this council is invited to drop by and share a day of food and fun and fellowship. And it's twenty-first year, and we are there to give a good day of food, fun, fellowship to the community and to provide assistance back to someone in the form of a scholarship or either some word organization. This year, we will be giving the proceeds from that park date to the Oasis of Hope Foundation. If anyone is familiar with Oasis of Hope Foundation, they provide thousands of backpacks every year to students into this, for this entire county. On another note, chief, that ISO rating, what is it now?
Our current ISO rating is two.
It's two, thank you. And to all of the applicants that apply for the District Three seat, I commend you also. Thank you for coming out. It's a challenging journey to be here. Now to Denise, I would tell you the same thing I told Abby Striplin, bring a money truck with you. We need money. Congratulations, and I wish you well. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brown. I bet that doesn't last long. Councilman Miller.
Yeah, coming from Councilman Fink, he is known for no comment, so you learn those little habits and quirks that each of us brings as individuals to this council, but I, again, applaud the other folks who came down to be interviewed last night, but you obviously are sitting up here and can't tell you how delighted I am and how much I look forward to working with you over the remainder of this term, and best of luck, and anything we can do to sort of help you, you know, make it easier for you in terms of answering questions, I think you're going to find that each and every one of us is more than willing and want you, as well as other fellow councilmen, to be as successful as possible. So, thank you.
Councilman Bowes.
Yes, sir. First of all, for everybody who put their name out there and came forward, thank you very much. Y'all did not make our job easy, I can promise you that, because every, every single person that put their name out there was more than qualified for this job, and I really do appreciate y'all for stepping up, willing to serve. Ms. Brown, congratulations, look forward to working with you over the next few months, and congratulations, thank you.
Councilman Fink.
Yes, actually, I'm not sure how to take the no comment, other than a closed mouth gathers no foot sometimes, but anyway, I would commend all the applicants as well. You guys all did a fantastic job, and it's, it's not an easy task to go through and select. Many of you I've met for the first time, many of you I've known my entire life, so I commend each of you for, you know, stepping out there and doing that. As far as Denise, I noticed they didn't tell you there's a lever on the side of your chair that will lift it up so that you're not sitting so far down, just in FYI for you. Denise and I have been friends for a number of years, and we go to church together, and I'm proud and honored to be up here with you, serving with you, so welcome. And to that end, you actually are on the Leisure Services Committee now by default, and we have a meeting scheduled at seven o'clock on the thirteenth of February at Jim's Restaurant. So you are duly invited. Thank you.
Does that make you chair of the fire committee? I mean, what's that other one? Dean's chair, wastewater?
I'll get to that in a moment. Okay, I'll get to that, okay? I have so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I hope by the end of this term, you'll feel the same way that you must feel right now, excited and energized. Thanks to everyone who stepped out and put their names before the city to serve, because you are a public servant when you serve up here. I would also ask any of you who know veterans who served in either Iraq or Afghanistan to contact the mayor's office. We contacted as many as we could find to honor them, we want to honor all of them. So if they live in the City of Prattville or in Ataga County, and they have served in Iraq or Afghanistan, please contact the mayor's office and give them their name and their contact information. Councilwoman Brown, I will have your committee assignments to you before the end of the week. It may not be as Councilman Fink or any of the other councilmen indicated, because I'm having to shuffle things up a little bit, but I'll have your assignments to you before the end of the week. That being said, Mayor, City Council, thank you for your service. We, our next meeting is on February the twenty-first, two thousand twelve, six p.m., right here in the council chamber. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say ahh. We adjourn.